We will, it is according to Apple 201 and we'll call this special meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order on March 29, 2022 at 2:00 PM and we're calling to order at 2:01. We have a single item on the agenda to receive a report from counsel on the status of Scotty Cook claims to federal acknowledgement and the pending petition for federal acknowledgement filed by the Scotty Cook Indian Tribe and thereafter to enter executive session to discuss substance and strategy of the town's response. And with that, I'm going to, Jeff, I'm going to introduce you to our fellow board members Rufus Duram and Glenn Sanchez. And Jeff, I'm gonna turn the microphone over to you.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. I don't think I've met Glenn before. I think I've met Rufus a number of times over the years.
How are you?
So he may not be, I don't know how much Glenn knows about the history of the Scotty Cook. I'll try to, I got a lot of ground to cover. And I'll try to do it as quickly as possible. Part of the, part of the reason for this meeting was-
Jeff, Maria is incoming, just to let you know. Hi, Maria, thanks for joining us.
I wanted to basically bring not only the selectmen but also the community up to date, to the extent that we can do that. And then I wanted to go into executive session to discuss some of our strategies going forward. So, boy, time flies. The, the town of Kent went through many years of litigation and administrative proceedings, dealing with the Scotty Cook Tribal Nation, the Scotty Cook Indian Tribe, and their respective efforts to achieve federal recognition. The, there was the proceedings before the Bureau of Indian Affairs that lasted for years. There was a series of appeals through the federal court system. I think there were two appeals on the tribal recognition issues with the Scotty Cook Tribal Nation. And then there was land claims litigation, which also ended up going to the Second Circuit Court of Appeals in New York City. The Scotty Cook Tribal Nation was denied federal recognition in about, I can't remember the exact date. I think it was around 2005. And then their land claims were dismissed by the trial court in around 2012. After that, the Bureau of Indian Affairs undertook a review and amendments to their acknowledgement regulations. And in 2015, new regulations were adopted. We participated in providing public comment with regard to those regulations. And not only the town of Kent, but the state of Connecticut and a lot of Connecticut interested parties. But to make a long story short, the, the regulations were modified. And I think the consensus was that the regulations would make it easier for groups claiming tribal status to be acknowledged by the federal government. Now, what an Indian tribe is, just for the sake of, we were clear. An Indian tribe is a group that has descended from a historical Indian tribe that has lived continuously since historical times to the present as a, as a separate and distinct community and has been under, had been a political entity, been under a leadership where the leaders would take actions for the benefit of the tribe on important issues. The, the Scotty Cook Tribal Nation was unable to be recognized because it was unable to provide sufficient evidence to establish that it had existed as a political entity for most of the 19th century. There were a couple of times where there was some sporadic leadership and some sporadic action, but generally speaking, there was no evidence that the BIA found credible that there was a leadership, you know, like a political, political entity. In the 20th century, the Scotty Cook was unable to provide evidence of of political authority for most of the first half of the 20th century. To about, I'm, for sake of argument, to about the mid 1960s. And then after 1996, because of the split between the SIT and the STN. So they were denied recognition. The SIT throughout that, the period of the recognition battle was claiming that they were the true tribe, they were the real Indians, not the STN, and that the SIT should be acknowledged. And there's several SITs. There's, there's the Allen Russell SIT, which is the one I'm really talking about. But there's a, there's another entity called the Scotty Cook Indian Tribe. It's under the leadership of somebody named Jeanette Storinger. And I think a guy named Michael Morningside is on her council. And, and she recently, just, just in January, contacted the first selectman, wanted to discuss her, her, her group's land claims and and trust fund claims. And then there's a, then there's some, there's a fellow who, who claimed to be part of the Kent Scotty Cook named Robert Birch, Scotty Cook First Nations. They seem to have gone away and are focusing their attention, I think, maybe more at Scotty Cook, New York. But there are a number of Scotty Cooks, Scotty Cook entities claiming tribal recognition. In any event, the 2015 regulations basically made several changes. For the sake of my discussion today, one change was that they allowed the existence of a state reservation to count as evidence of community and political authority. That was something new that had been a big issue in the STN case. Initially, the, the BIA said, well, there wasn't enough evidence to establish community or political authority, but since there was a reservation, we're going to, we're gonna think that that's sufficient. And we're going to acknowledge the STN. The state, the town, several of the parties took an appeal to the IBIA, that's the Indian Board of Indian, Indian Board of Indian Appeals, or Interior Board of Indian Appeals, and they reversed the decision, said no, that the, the existence of the state reservation without more is not sufficient evidence. Well, now the, the regulations now have been changed to say, oh, no, a state reservation is evidence of political, of community and political authority. And they made a change in how they assess or analyze marriage rates. And I guess those were the big changes. When I say assess marriage rates, how they, how they assess marriage rates for the purposes of determining how strong the community is. And the regulations basically said if 50% of the members, if 50% of the marriages in the group were, were between members of the group, that counted as community and as political authority, as a presumption of it. And so that would require basically 70, for 50% of the members to be married to each other of the marriages, it would, each, each marriage would be counted once. Now they've changed that to count each marriage twice. So each member who's married is going to be counted in determining 50%. I don't know that that's going to be so relevant to us in the 20th century. Because one of the other changes that they made is most of their investigations are now going to be from the 20th century. So it was all well and good. There was a ban on repetitioning that had continued in the regulations. And one of the things that happened, well, let me stop there. So in the summer of 2019, the, there was a press release and the SIT indicated that they were, they were going to file a new petition for federal acknowledgement. That's with the Scotty Cook Indian Tribe. Allen Russell's group was going to file a new petition for federal acknowledgement with the, it's now called the Office of Federal Acknowledgement. And, and they were going to, they were anxious to pursue land claims again. So we kind of geared up to, to get ready for that filing. And the, there was a, there was a couple of boarded efforts of filings that the OFA did not accept for, for some, whatever the defect was, I don't know. And just recently, that was, they cured that defect, it appears. And so now there is a active petition before the Office of Federal Acknowledgement involving the Scotty Cook Indian Tribe. That our, our common deadline is July 7. So I think it was published, it was published on March 7 of this year. And we have just this little window in which to develop our response. The, the petition is on file at the, the petition narrative is on file at the Office of Federal Acknowledgement. The supporting materials has not yet been published. Some of it will be published hopefully soon, so we can look at it. But, but the membership list and some of the critical information apparently is not going to be published. I talked to the, to, oh gosh, Lee Fleming, the director, about a week ago, looking for the membership list and the organizational documents and that sort of thing. And some of that is, the membership lists are not going to be published. What's sort of curious, we were, I was able to glean from the documentation that their membership is, was in 2002, which is the last official membership list that I've seen. They filed that in the STN petition. That had, I think it had 73 members on it. There, they now are down to 43. And at various times since 2002, they've, they've been up to like 180. So, and I think that's because there's these other SIT entities that keep filing documents with different memberships. And, but the STN that files, it appeared that their membership list was only 44 individuals. Whereas the STN was, you know, they were up to 500 or 600 members at one time and they had to cut them back because a lot of them had not been tribal and tribal relations for decades. So they ended up something like 350. So that got filed. We, our deadline is, our responsive deadline is, is in July, early July. Jean should be receiving an official notice from the BIA if she hasn't already. And the notice goes to the governor and to the attorney general. Notice goes to the Connecticut federally recognized tribes. And a notice, I saw they had Richard Velkey on the notice list for the STN. The, the process is a little different than it was last time. They do a preliminary review based upon an analysis of whether the group has descended from a historical tribe, whether they have a governing document that describes their organization and their membership, and whether their members have, have some preliminary genealogy back to the historical tribe. And if they pass that, then, then, then it gets, then all the other criteria get reviewed. For us, the, there's some, there's some, there's some interesting issues. But we have to, I think we have to respond to the petition as, as if it's all going to be reviewed and we have to address all the issues that are, that are there. So, one of the other things that happened was, oh, let me just, in the meanwhile, after all of the litigation involving the town of Kent got resolved with the Scotty Cook Tribal Nation, they brought in action against the state of Connecticut, claiming $600 million was taken from them in breach of a trust duty. That has been, that isn't working its way through the courts. You know, the, the STN and the SIT always have claimed that the, that the reservation was, was what's called Indian country and that it was historical Indian lands, native, native lands. And the evidence seems to be that the Scotty Cook were really not, were really, were historically not where they are now. But that they moved there maybe in the 1730s and thereafter. And that that land was really colony of Connecticut land. And, and in the, in the 1750s, when the, when the colony surveyors went up there, they, they laid out some land for the Indians, probably about 2,000 acres to be used at the pleasure of the colony. And that land has been sold off, especially around between 1800 and maybe 1811. Portions of that was sold off to benefit the tribe. And so now they have about 400 acres roughly, give or take. But the, the Scotty Cook Tribal Nation claimed that when that land was sold off, the money should have come to the benefit of the Indians. And that therefore they're entitled to, I don't know how they calculate it, but some $600 million. They lost that case in the trial court. The case is on appeal at the appellate court. And the, that was argued in January and it's awaiting a decision. So that's in play. Not, we're not directly involved, although we're, we're really involved indirectly. In other news, there, in the regulations, the 2015 regulations, the, there was a ban on repetitioning by previously denied groups. In other words, previously denied groups are not allowed to come and resubmit a new application for federal acknowledgement under the new regulations. That has actually been in the regulations, I think, since, since 1978. But there's been two court cases that have struck down the ban on repetitioning. Last, I would say, you know, within the last year, there's been two federal court cases. In both cases, the, the, the regular, you know, the court, it was administrative appeal, the, the court said, oh yeah, there was not, it was, it was illegal arbitrary and abusive discretion to have this ban on repetitioning because you've changed the regulations. And you now, I'm remanding it to the, to the BIA to, to either provide better reasoning, amend the regulation, or eliminate the regulation. So the two cases remanded back to the BIA. And the BIA hasn't done anything with it yet. We submitted comments, or the first selectmen submitted comments twice, requesting that the ban on repetitioning be be kept. And, you know, have better reasoning for it. But that it was important to, to us that it be kept because we had, you know, 15 years of litigation with the STN. So that, the, there was a change of administrations and our, or our first selectmen's comments, I've never even been acknowledged. But we did submit them. And so that's in play. And I want to discuss something about that in executive session because we have some strategies regarding that. So I think that is sort of the quick summary of what the recent history has been. Our, our present problems are, one, we have this petition for federal acknowledgement filed by the Scotty Cook Indian Tribe that we, we, well, up to this point, we've, we've, our position is when we would address it. And two, we have the courts having struck down, down the, the ban on repetitioning by previously denied groups. And if that, if that stands, that allows the Scotty Cook Tribal Nation to repetition if they wanted to do so. So those, those are the two issues. I actually thought that I, I, you know, it's hard to get any information. You know, a lot of times you're, you're reading tea leaves and trying to figure out what's going on, you know, what, what happened to this? It took two years to get this petition. Actually, I think that is, almost two and a half years to get this, this SIT petition started at the BIA or the OFA. And, you know, we've been, we've been trying to figure out what's been going on behind the scenes. There's, uh, there was, actually, I think the, the current, there's a current appropriation for half a million dollars to the Scotty Cook. I'm not sure if it's the Scotty Cook Tribal Nation or to who it's, who it actually it's for, but to the Scotty Cook to, to move a burial, some mysterious burial ground. Not the one that we can see from Scotty Cook Road, but some other burial ground that the state is appropriating money for. So we can't get a, you know, we don't have, we can't really see all the directions the players are moving. But right now, we know we got to address the Scotty Cook Scotty Cook Indian Tribe petition for recognition. So that's our, that's the primary task that I'd like to discuss with you in executive session.
And so, that's our cue. I will make a motion.
Yeah, I don't, does anyone wants to have, if I have any questions in public session, I'm happy to answer them.
Sure. So Glenn, Rufus. Any questions? I know there's a lot of information that Jeff has just handed out here.
I'm good for the moment. I mean-
Okay.
Okay.
Did you invite the public to ask a question?
I will, Leela, as I just wanted to give the board members a chance before I opened it up for some brief questions from the public, because that's not on the, unfortunately, it didn't get put on the agenda, but just wanted to ask Rufus if you had any questions.
Oh, I'm good.
Okay. Leela, you have a question?
Thanks. Just a point of clarification, sir. You, when you were closing out your remarks, you said that we have to address the SIT petition for recognition. But a few, a couple of minutes before that, you said that it was a repetition to the SIM.
The, 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 no. The S, the S, what I anticipate is we have to deal with the SIT petition right now. But because of these court cases, I'm anticipating that the STN will be very anxious to repetition for federal acknowledgement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And if you were to look at the, if you were to look at their website and their history, their claims, they, they felt that they had provided sufficient evidence, but it was through political interference that they were denied. I don't, I don't agree with that, but that's their claim. So if, if the, you know, depending on what the, the BIA does with the regulation, if the, if they just sort of say, oh, well, the courts decided we're, we're, we're not going to worry about that. Let, let, let whoever wants to, let whoever was denied in years past repetition, then I'm, I can't imagine the STN will not come forward. I, they got, they, 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 they have not gone away.
Jeff, the idea of living continuously, like on the reservation is not really something that is recognized as a, that they have to prove anymore?
Well, the, the fact that the, not, well, I, I'll discuss that with you in executive session. I think there's some nuances I'd like to, that I at least have. I have some, I have some, some theories about how that should be dealt with. But basically though, basically, the idea is, if, the idea is that, that, and this was, this was addressed at great length in the Scotty Cook Tribal Nation petition on appeal. Because initially, the Assistant Secretary said, oh, they don't have evidence of, of community or political authority, but they got a reservation, therefore it must, it must exist, even though there's no evidence of, the evidence of political authority and evidence of community. The, so now they've put it in the regulations. And the, the group, the SIT clearly says, I mean, they're, in their, in their materials, they clearly say, oh, we, the fact that we have a reservation and we've had it for, you know, for 200 years or whatever it was, 250 years, that we, really, that's, that's all the evidence we need. And, but I don't think that's, that's, that that satisfies the requirement. And I'll tell you why in executive session.
Thanks, Jeff. So I will make, sorry, just writing it out, make a motion to enter into executive session, inviting Jeff Senkowitz and Maria Horn to discuss legal strategy for response to the SIT petition.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Great. So we will pop everybody out into the waiting room. I'm going to pause the recording. If there's any buddy left. Just one to join back in. Alrighty. Thanks for persevering, Donna. So Jeff, you'll, you're going to give us a brief on the funding piece. Strategy.
Do you want to just do the motion first, or, or you want me to discuss the money first?
Um, you need, do you need to resume recording the meeting? I thought I did. I did. That's okay. But thank you for the reminder. I can, I'm happy to make the motion.
Okay.
So I will make, so we can get into full discussion. I will make a motion to authorize Special Counsel Jeff Senkowitz to proceed with submitting a response to the Scotty Cook Indian Tribe petition for federal recognition and further to coordinate with other interested parties in submitting a petition for rulemaking to the Department of Interior to address impacts of recent court decisions on the 2015 acknowledgement regulations.
Second.
Thank you. Alrighty.
Okay. So now, I guess what I, what I felt I should do is address the, the issue of the finances for this, for this project.
Yes.
About, it's been, well, of one of the things that I have attempted to do throughout the, my work on the Scotty Cook was, is to coordinate with other interested parties in sharing the legal work necessary to do a response and sharing the out-of-pocket expenses for experts to evaluate the evidence that has been submitted by the petitioner. In this case, it would be the Scotty Cook Indian Tribe. And and developing any new evidence that we needed to submit to support the petition or, or to support our, our, our analysis. the petition or, or to support our, our, our analysis or our evaluation of the, of the evidence. So with that in mind, up until this point, I have been working, you know, not, not, we, we, we've been sharing strategy or sharing ideas, I guess you'd say, and sharing some of the work with the Assistant Attorney General, an attorney for Kent School. And, and now we're maybe talking about our, 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 our historical consortium included Connecticut Light and Power. I think that might be first light now. So we're talking about getting them in, involved if they want to. So with that in mind, we do have experts lined up. The, at the moment, we've already spent forty-four thousand dollars in that regard for work to date. And it's anticipated through the filing of the response by early July of another forty thousand in non-legal out-of-pocket expense. And in terms of, so, so I've estimated, for the sake of argument, fifty thousand dollars the town should be looking at for, for that, for its share of that. And, and, and I'm anticipating, you got to think maybe a hundred thousand dollars in my, my time and effort. I'm charging at a reduced rate of one ninety. It's sort of the historical rate that I've charged the town. And only because I like this kind of work. But that's my estimate of what it was going to be. And since the big filing is going to be due in July, it's really going to be, it's going to be immediate. I would say that I had estimated a hundred and fifty thousand a couple of years ago. And so it hasn't really changed. But, but I think that's what the town has to look forward to, to do a proper response.
Okay. I'm just getting some information from Barbara. So we'll need to go, the Board of Selectmen are going to need to officially meet and have a conversation to be able to take a decision on an additional funding for, for possibly this year and even into twenty-two, twenty-three to to continue to address this. I'm gonna, yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to get some information from Barbara and she's two offices away. On seven-one, there will be fifty-nine thousand, fifty dollars total available minus any invoices that come in between now and then. So there, so it's not an additional twenty-nine fifty. That twenty-nine fifty is the remaining from the thirty thousand in this year. I thought that when I went over there before and asked her, she had said that it was in a separate special fund, but it is the remaining thirty, what remains from the thirty K that's budgeted. And then on seven-one, it would be another thirty thousand. So the Board of Selectmen will have to meet to, to talk about a supplemental request from, from the Board of Finance. Any Glenn Rufus, Maria, any questions or comments related to the motion that we have?
I'm happy to, to, to the extent I have standing in this group to, to endorse the, the, the motion and the work of Jeff's work for many years on, on the complicated issues in front of us. I'm glad that, that Kent has good counsel here.
Yeah. And, and you have great standing in this group. We are, I am very grateful for all of the institutional knowledge you have and the, you know, the help that you provide us as a delegate. It's, it's, the town thanks you. When, we know that you're, you have a lot, a lot going on. You have a lot of constituents, a lot of towns. So we very much appreciate the, the help and, and support that you provide with this. And Jeff, I, you know, the time that you and I have spent on the phone and the amount of time that you've invested in our town and just in the last two and a half years with me helping get me up to speed and on a very complicated, complex situation. So I very much appreciate it.
I, I just, let me comment one thing. So I've had a pretty long and, and varied career. This, the Indian case, this, this matter involving the Indians was actually been one of the most rewarding matters I've ever had in terms of the outcome, the cooperation I always had from the client. You know, a lot of towns, it's hard to get cooperation from all parties, but it's, it's been, it's been rewarding. And I'll try to keep doing a good job.
We appreciate that. So, um, let's vote on the motion. Would you like me to read it back, folks? We're good. Okay. Vote on the motion. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. So that is the, the, the motion. We do need to set a meeting. And if Rufus and Maria, if you need to go, I, you are probably doing the one-armed paper hanging duty. I want to keep you on just for us to look at our calendars, nor Jeff. But it's up to you if you want to stay.
I, 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 I do admire good calendar wrangling done by anyone. I will leave you to it.
Thanks.
And I look forward to, you know, more conversations on the topic and working together on this. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Maria.
Bye.
Thank you, Jeff.
You're very welcome. My pleasure.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. So, um, if we do an in-person meeting, it's twenty-four hours. If we do a Zoom meeting, it's forty-eight. I'm, you know, part of me leans towards a Zoom meeting because it's been the custom for, I don't even remember how long at this point. And I know that this is a, you know, this is sort of a big conversation that we're going to be having among the three of us and will probably have a lot of public interest. But, you know, it's up to the three of us how we want to meet. But I would, I would recommend sticking with Zoom. We do have to reckon with this very shortly, but for the purposes of this next meeting, I think, just to simplify things with the forty-eight hours. So we are at Wednesday. Are we at Wednesday? No, we're at Tuesday.
I will not be available Friday.
Okay. So we could do Monday, the fourth, Tuesday, the fifth.
Monday, the fourth is good. Anytime, the fifth, I have a commitment in the morning. But.
Why don't we, in, in case that Board of Finance meeting is on Wednesday, if it's okay with you all, if we could do it on Monday, that, I think that would make sense just to give us a little bit more time to give Board of Finance heads up and anything, you know, give them any materials that might, they might need to have. Leonard, students are back?
Oh yeah, no, that's fine. I can do afternoon on Monday. How early afternoon can you go? Could you both do one?
I can do anytime.
Let's do one o'clock.
Okay. So we'll have Joyce get that out. Alrighty.
Great.
I lost track of my phone. Apple says it's four thirteen. I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Fantastico.
All right.